Good evening, good evening, good evening all. Welcome, welcome to another surprise Sunday livestream. Sometimes these things just happen. Why? Because eventually, every so often, you see things, you find things, people send me these things and I'm like, oh, didn't realise that was going on. So as always, thank you very much everyone joining us this evening in chat. MW58, they're saying George Finch is the new Donald Trump apparently. We'll see. I, I think it is very odd that they are putting so much of a spotlight on him. I think it's so odd that they're putting so much of a spotlight on him, especially when so much could go wrong. I, I still think a lot could go on, wrong with him in charge. You know, is it such a good idea to put all his attention on him? Not only that, what are other people in his group gonna think? Why does he get to, you know, share this, have the spotlight? Why don't we get the spotlight as well? If someone, I don't know, maybe like Darren Grimes, is Grimesy gonna get quite jealous of the spotlight that he's got? Who can say? Who can say? But Dave W, good evening to you as well, Leo Sapien, good evening to you as well. And like I say, good evening, good evening, good evening to everyone else joining us. At the, at the, at this, like I say, please do remember to click on the like, share and subscribe. Well, hit the share button and the like button. That helps people get more to the channel. What's this? Finch is being controlled by Farrar. Just watch the interview. Oh, I, I am looking forward to this interview. I am, I am very, very much looking forward to watching this interview. I, I think this is, oh, hang on. When I, when I remember to, when I remember to put it up, there we are. There we go. There we go. That's better. So I think you should be able to hear this.
Council used to read Conservatives, but like many areas of the UK, Reform are taking over.
We are speaking to the youngest ever leader of a council, George Finch, just nineteen years old about flags, budgets, the views of the young and the future of reform.
And I want to tell you more about how Reform UK are going to make a success out of Warwickshire County Council. And to tell you how Nigel Farage is going to make it to Prime Minister in 2029. I've been in hospital waiting rooms, I've been in wards where there's children.
County Council.
It's a lot of politicians don't have.
George. There we go. So at the start now, there we go. So yeah, hopefully you could all hear that. But yes, we actually have a very rare interview. A very rare interview indeed on this. Bear in mind, I think in this room, even though you probably can't see them, it is very likely there is some form of handler in the room. I would not be too surprised if there is, or if there was a handler in the room at the time this interview went off. And not only that, of course, they've, they've granted this, this interview to the, to the Times. Well, the Telegraph, shall we say, not the Times, the, the Telegraph. Weird, you know, one to grant an interview to, but there you go. But I suppose it's keeping in with Reform's attempt to sort of once again subsume the, the Tory party, you know, might as well take over their newspaper as well in the process of it, as they say. So let's find out then what's going on in this, this interview. Cause I think this is going to be an interesting watch, to say the least. Do feel free to, of course, comment along as well. And yes, we'll, we'll go, we'll comment along with it as well. So yes. Oh, Leo Sapien, I believe this was before or after the recalibrating Warwickshire press conference. Yeah, the, the press conference, which basically went, here's our policy or policies. To which, as we went through that, that video, where are the policies? Darren, there will at least be, of course, two press officers in the room. One of them will be, of course, from the council, the other one is probably reforms. Yep. There will be, the re, there will be the, the council press officer. Well, who knows, you might have dismissed them, might have said, you're not needed. You know, you're not needed. Who knows? I'll tell you, this now must be a very interesting time to be a, a worker at Warwickshire County Council. A very interesting time to be a council officer there, because apparently he's going to blame the blob. So when things start to go wrong, it's not going to be their fault. It's, it's the blob. It's the blob that will be trying to stop them. Anyway, let's crack on then into this.
Warwickshire County Council, budget of over 400 million, employs around 5,000 people. You're nineteen. How do you justify? How can you say you're experienced enough to govern such an extraordinary, large body?
Okay, good opening question, right? Genuinely good opening question, right? Now, I've said this before, I've said this before in the past, and I think it's well worth saying again. Him being nineteen and a councillor is not the problem. Because there are young councillors that run to be councillors all the time. Right? That's not the problem. The problem is, is as you've just heard, he has been made council leader. He has no experience working in a council, running anything of this size. Remember, effectively, like this equivalent position is sort of like the, the CEO of like a big company, effectively. You know, this is not normal. You would not put someone like this into this type of position. I mean, the ultimate of, of the other one is to, to why, or with this, would you put someone like George Finch to suddenly head up the British Army? No, you wouldn't, because they would have no clue how to run the British Army. They may have never been a soldier. They have no idea how, how a military runs, how it, how it operates, how to fight a war, nothing. Right? So it's not even the fact that it's his age. But bear in mind, his age does come into a factor of it, but the factor is experience that he hasn't really had any, is gonna try and bluff his way through this question, very much so, I think. But yeah. I, I still think it is madness. You would put someone this young into leading a council when if you, you look at it, you look at the position, what it entails. It's like a CEO, you would never put someone this young into this type of like very serious position. You, you just wouldn't. You wouldn't put them anywhere with a barge pole. What's this? Finch's barber hates him or perhaps it's, it's mum. Leo Sapien, oh yes, his mum was a hairdresser, so he says. So. Well, I'm one to talk with my hair, but you know. Having watched the interview with Finch, there was something strange about his behaviour. Can't really put my finger on it. Leo Sapien, I've seen this interview, watch out for the contradictions. Hmm. I'm not surprised. I'm not surprised. But just back to this comment here, I would not be surprised if he has been prepared for this interview, because I've done comms before. I've, I've done this type of thing. I've, I've prepared people for flight interviews. And what you would normally do is you would think, okay, what has happened? What questions are you going to, and you would come up with as many different questions, how you might answer this. And then you would say, you go to them, look, if they ask this type of question, this is what your response is to this. If they ask this type of question, this is what your response is to this. And you prepare them. And you just ask them these questions and you just keep on getting them to repeat the answer again and again and again and again, until they get it down and polished. So if you're saying again that you've watched the interview and it comes across very strange, that is probably because he has been very, very much prepared for this, for this interview. And I have a sneaking suspicion, this interview might be quite a softball interview. I, I think this interview might be quite a very much a softball interview. But anyway, let's get into how he answers this question. So he's nineteen, been put in charge of this council. What's his, what's his answer to this?
The only three qualifications you need as council leader is to have confidence of the people to vote you in as councillor. The confidence then of the group to vote you in as group leader and the confidence of the council to vote you in as leader of the council. They're the only.
Okay, right. Wait, wait. Oh, hold on. So the only thing you need to be leader of the council is to have what the confidence of the people who vote for you, the confidence of your group and the confidence of the council. And apparently that's good enough. Nothing to do with experience or anything like that, just so long as, as people vote for you. It's fine.
Three qualifications you need to be leader of the council. So a one man band here. I'm not doing everything myself. I'm not ignorant or arrogant enough to say that.
But eventually at the end of the day, you are the leader. You are probably the ultimate one, or at least should be the one making all the decisions on the council. Like you are the one to direct which way your group will be going, to put out a strategy, to put all the, all this stuff forward. That stuff hasn't seemed to be very, very much forthcoming. So already I'm, I'm not impressed.
We've got a cabinet, Stephen Shaw, the deputy, finance and property. We do, we work with all cabinet and this is the thing, it's not a one man, one man band and it never would be.
If I'm trying.
Wait. So remember, the question was, you're nineteen, you're put in charge of this council, multimillion pound budget, all these people work for you. And his answer to that question was, the only thing you really need to run the council is you need to have confidence of the people that voted you in, confidence of the, your group and then the confidence of the council. Bear in mind, there is a motion of no confidence. I just bet somewhere on the table down the line. Who knows? We'll see how things progress. But yeah, it's, it's very, very weird. Very, very weird. That was what you would say. And oh yeah, you know, we're not a one man band. We've got all these other people, you know, we're working together. That's kind of what a, a council does. It's, it's, it's in the word. It's in the word council. So yeah, that doesn't install any confidence really at all. But that seems to me to be a very pre, pre worded ans- answer to me from my experience as well. That seems to be very, very carefully thought through and worked through with for that one.
I remember when I, what it was like, when, how I felt when I was your age. And if I was given that responsibility, even if you had the team around you, I would just be terrified. I mean, I have a fridge that's older than you.
I have several friends. To be fair, George, I'm looking at your birth date here, 2006. My oldest child was born two years later than you. So I could literally be your mum, as creepy as that sounds.
And many of our readers and audience could be your grandmother.
But are we being ageist? Is all of this obsession about you being nineteen slightly ageist? I mean, what, what's your reaction to it?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
Is it ageist? No, because the always main criticism is, he is nineteen. He hasn't got the experience in this role. Even as, as the, one of the interviewer pointed out, oh yeah, you've got all these people around you. Is that still not, you know? At the end of the day, he's still got to be making these calls. He's still gonna be making the big decisions. He is in effect equivalent to a CEO. He has to make decisions that, you know, ultimately he is then responsible for. The question is, is what those decisions are eventually going to be? And what the consequences of those decisions are also going to be for his, the people who, who voted for him, you know? That's the, that's the real point here. When it all comes down to it, the buck stops with him. But the ones interviewed face that Finch says it all, yeah, I'm not too surprised. I'm surprised there are two interviewers here, but there you go.
Wouldn't go down that slowest path of going, it's ageist. I'll just say it's completely irrelevant. We've got a job to do that's bigger than everybody, no matter what age or experience, it's bigger than us all.
So then why are you not allaying all these fears? If this is the constant criticism, if this is your constant criticism, maybe then you have yet to actually communicate you can do the role, that you are fit for this role. So you're not instilling any confidence in people if this is still the continuing question being brought up against him at all.
I, I'm in charge of 600,000 people. That's the population of Warwickshire. And they're the people that we actually have to look out for. You know, like I say in all of my committees, it's not about me, it's about you, the other councillors, it's about the people out there that we represent. So.
And that's some populist rhetoric right there. But there you go.
People are throwing around, oh, it's age this, age that. It's irrelevant. You're wasting time.
Again, never ever been about his age, never ever been about his age. It's about the experience. Really is about the experience. He's got no experience. He was gonna go to university and do a history degree. He's had nothing to do with politics prior to this. And yet he's been put into an incredibly important position, which no other party would put someone into a position like this, even if they were nineteen, even if they were twenty, even if they were thirty. You know, if I suddenly ran like for, for Barnsley Council, you know, they would not just instantly make me leader of the, of the council. It would be insane. What qualifications or experience do I have of, of like running such a large institution and making these decisions? You would at least expect leaders to have at least a couple of years on the council before they, you know, made the decision, made say, oh, well, I'm gonna be the leader. So it's not about his age, it's always, always has been about his experience. The most shocking thing is, is that he's nineteen and being put into this. That's why people get, I think, more shocked, because would, again, I, I go back to it. Would you put an unexperienced nineteen year old who's just joined the army and made them head of the British Armed Forces? Absolutely not. No way. No way in heck would you do, do that. Madness. But this is Reform UK. This is the type of stuff they pull.
You know, we haven't got time to be sat around a table going, oh, he's too young. He's a leader, end of. You won't complain about a seventy year old being President of the United States or even older now. You're not gonna complain about that because he's doing.
Again, it's not the age, there's experience here. There is experience coming on here. And that is the big thing that is being hugely missed off here. It's the thing he's trying to talk around. Very much so. Down for that evening, Ollie. Awesome work covering all these council debacles for the past few months. Well, thank you very much. Like I say, I, I, I said this on my morning walk as well. I generally did not think there would be this much stuff to cover. Like I, I generally did not think there would be this much stuff to cover. It's just kept on coming in and in and in and in. And it's just the stuff that I've been covering. Oh God, what's this? A friend of mine says that George Finch will be the Deputy Prime Minister for former elected into government. Madness. Madness indeed. Yeah, why on earth would you even do that? But oh, I, I don't think why they would even give him that position, although apparently the only thing I've seen about this is that he is asked, would you like to be an MP? So it'll be very interesting what his answer to that is when we get to it.
Doing a job. If you're doing a good job, that's all that matters.
Yeah.
But where you want to.
Okay, so if, if doing a good job, right, if doing a good job is all that matters, let's throw out, throw out the idea that he's nineteen and just judge it on how Reform UK have acted in Warwickshire County Council. They have not been doing a good job at all. I mean, they've wasted time on, on, on the flag debacle. They've wasted so much time, seem to be discussing other stuff that hasn't really made an impact to people. They've come out with this reforming Warwickshire plan, like this four point policy plan that they've got, which didn't seem to be heavy on any type of policy at all whatsoever. It all either seemed to be stuff that the council sort of either did already, but was easy to sort of prove that you've done something. You know, oh yeah, look, we're, we're doing this. But don't the councils do that? Oh no, we, we've done it. We, we've made it our priority. So yeah, I'm, I'm probably, I think, may, we'll give it maybe a couple of months' time. Maybe we'll wait till like the end of the year. Maybe like November, December time. And we'll, we'll get councillor Conde Tor back on while asking that question as well. Like what do you think? If, if, we're asking this exact same question. If you remove like the age of George Finch out of the equation, because he himself has said, judges by how good a job they have done. What, how good a job have they done? I will be very interested to hear what his, what his opinion on that is. Oh Christ, what's this? Leo Sapien, the education portfolio holder reckons he will be an MP in three years, but doesn't even bother with this ward as a councillor. Is this in Warwickshire as well? That, well, this is something else I, I'm also wondering about, because we're hearing a lot about infighting. And I have to wonder if a lot of them are infighting about who gets to be an MP. Ah, yep. So yeah, I mean, we watched, we watched that initially a couple of, we was right back at the start. Right back at the start, I believe. There was a, like a schools meeting, where like all the head teachers came together to like discuss this. And it was like the reforms first thing and some, and one of the head teachers really took it to him. Really took it to him on, on education. Maybe we'll have to try and watch that again, but I know it's somewhere on my, on my channel. I think it, did I do it? It's on livestream? I can't remember if I did it as livestream. I might have done. Have to try and remember. But anyway, let's get back into, back into this. So hang on, we'll just scoot it back.
About that, because he's doing a job. If you're doing a good job, that's all that matters.
Yeah.
But where you want of these children?
Remember, according to George Finch, doing a good job is all that matters. Interesting way to judge them later on, won't it? Interesting way to judge them less down the line. Very interesting way to judge them on that.
Children that were sort of born in a suit and tie. You're old before your time. You're eleven going on twenty five.
You are very well dressed, by the way.
I feel older than I am.
Yeah.
But no, no, I was born in a small town in Warwickshire, Bedworth, working class town, you know? We didn't have, you know, the luxuries of two cars, a holiday.
I thought this was about to become the Four Yorkshiremen sketch, sketch then. Oh, we didn't have that. That was luxury, luxury.
A year. That, that's not us. My mum worked in a factory and she trained up to be a hairdresser. Then thought that's not bringing enough income in to, to supply, to support a family. So she trained day and night in a college to be a teaching assistant for one to one kids.
Not enough money as a hairdresser. I know a few hairdressers. They bring in plenty of money. But there you go. We're not talking about his mum.
Now she works there. So that's, that's what we all need to strive for. Families like that, you know, my dad owned his own carpentry business. He had sepsis, got ill. But I know the complexities of a, of a completely odd.
Wait, he owned his own business? That's news to me that his dad owned his own business. Yet very, very working class to have a a parent who owns their own business. But again, depending on what the business be, might be, who knows? Seems to be, yeah, who who was it, Leo Sapien? Watch out for the contradictions.
Family going from just a regular family to then having a son that's leader of a council. You know, I've seen waiting rooms in in A and E for eight hours or longer. Then my sister's uh got FND, functional neurological disorder, she'll lose all function of her arms and legs just like that. I get it. I've been in hospital waiting rooms, I've been in wards where there's children, self harming, not being a bit being ill. And I've seen it all and and that's the experience a lot of politicians don't have. And that's the point there, they're they're gonna make policy on that.
Yeah, true. Owning your business, of course, is not a posh thing. Yeah, that's, let's, let's point out. But again, depends though. Yeah, that's it. Just a small business mining diamond somewhere. Very true. Yeah, that is, that is true as well. A lot of people um do see themselves as a as working class when sometimes they might not be sometimes fit into that definition, but we are a country that puts a lot of emphasis on class. I I don't, I don't even know why I would divide myself as, to be honest. Uh, I don't care. I really don't. Um. But there's a lot of people out there who do. Um, Reform UK obviously being one as well, that really emphasise that. Oh, hang on, we'll just rewind that. So, again, has a sister with 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 send stuff. I'm sure, you know, he's been, you know, and and seen stuff growing up, stuff like that as well. I've known people that have had uh younger and older siblings as well with um, you know, with with send issues as well. Um, it's not been easy for them, you know, growing up. Not being easy as well, especially when they've had, you know, an older sibling that have that, those those types of uh, those types of, you know, um send problems. So I'm sure he has had, you know, we'll we'll give, we'll give George here the benefit of the doubt and say, I'm sure he has and seen some of these things that he is talking about. Um. And, you know, I'm sure that's affected him as well growing up. Um, let's, let's be fair, let's, let's be, let's be really fair about this and give him the benefit of the doubt on that. Well, not want benefit of the doubt, but say, you know, he's had, he's had those experiences.
Things a lot of politicians don't have, and that's the point there, they're they're gonna make policy on NHS and education. But they're not actually sat in a waiting room for eight hours. They don't know what it's like to see the elderly.
So they're gonna make poli-, so according to George Finch, people are going to make policy on the NHS, but they don't know what it's like when they've been sat in a waiting room for six hours. But they're gonna make policy on it. Is he, is he trying to seriously suggest that you've got to have like sat in a waiting room to be able to make policy on the NHS? What? I'm 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 sorry, but I don't think, again, that would really give you any experience to make policy of, you know, making policy to run the NHS. Oh, you're you're gonna make policy for the NHS? What gives you? What are your qualifications? Well, I once did it at six hours in the, in a, in a NHS waiting room. That's insane. That is, that is insane. Of of, that is quite insane. But anyway, there you go. Anyway, let's jump it back a bit.
They're not actually sat in a waiting room for eight hours. They don't know what it's like to see the elderly um woman walking, being wheeled in a wheelchair with a gash on her head because she's fall over, because there's no adult social care. Yep. I've seen that and I know the sticking points. I know how to, we can try and solve that, but you've got.
So he's seen all these things and he knows the sticking points. He knows the problem. So why then have you not come up with policy to help those sticking points? Anyway. Uh, brave stance now for an eighteen year old, uh, sorry, nineteen year old, remember, get his age right, get his age right. Uh, brave stands for a nineteen year old, that other politicians, of course, make policy on things they do not have enough experience in, even if it was a well made point. Yeah, he doesn't know what he doesn't know. I mean, sure, you can have opinions on all types of things, doesn't necessarily mean your opinion is gonna be right on it. I mean, that's, that's like saying you can only be like, you know, the Minister for Health if you are are like a doctor or a nurse or have worked in the NHS. Or you can only make policy if you've done that. Now, of course, some policy things do have those, they have people, they they talk to doctors, they get their viewpoints, which is again, is fine. That's a good thing to do. But the end of the point is, is what's then your policy? What are you gonna do? Yeah, nineteen shouldn't he surely be put out to pass to them? Oh, yeah, these these nineteen year olds making policy because they've done, you know, they've, they've seen things in the uh, in in the NHS waiting room. Anyway.
And I know the sticking points, I know how to, we can try and solve that, but you've got people in government that are completely out of depth with what they're actually doing. It's it's, Joe, it's very disappointing that we've actually got to this stage, that we're relying on people uh that are leading the government that have no clue what's going on. It's ridiculous.
And I guess there are. Such as, I would, I would be, sorry, if I was of these interviews, I would be following up on this. I would be instantly following up on this. So you're like, okay, what are these sticking points? Because again, it's an opportunity to talk about his policy. What's his policy? What, what are you gonna do, George? If you know these sticking points, what are they? What policy are you gonna do to unstick those points? The interviewer should have immediately followed up on that. That would be my immediate follow up question on that. Yeah. Where will George Finch be in six months' time? Who, who knows? Who knows? Uh, ask yourself this, if you ask the public, who would you choose uh to run the health authority, a doctor or a lawyer? Again, like I say, yeah, most people, of course, would say a doctor. Um, but a doctor would be probably far better use, probably seeing patients, you know, doing his doctor job. Um, but you are right, there is a, a like a bit of a public perception on that. I agree with you on that one. Yeah, remember Reform Work on Vibe. Oh, Billy Kershaw, good evening, good evening to everyone else joining us, by the way. Do forget, don't, don't, do forget, don't forget to click on the like and subscribe button. Uh, it's the cliche of the accuse the others of what they are guilty of. It is the title of this interview, uh, is the title of this interview at this point, right? Yeah, pretty much. They have no idea what they're doing, but I know what I'm doing. But prove it. Prove it. Bring in your policy. If this was any other politician, if this was any other politician, you could then use this as a jumping off point to talk about your policy, about what you would be doing different. But he's got no policy, so he can't talk about it. Yeah. I know it's unkind to say about a youngster, but I don't like him, the arrogance. Yeah, it's insane that he is coming across with that attitude, that I know better. Then then prove it. What policy are you gonna go forward with? What are you gonna do about those sticking points? How are you gonna get that unstuck? Again, if I was the interviewer, that's what I would be going for. That would be my follow up question. So we'll see if that's their follow up question. Uh, some, something tells me it's not.
Well, uh, that are leading the government that have no clue what's going on. It's ridiculous.
And I guess there are a lot of forty year olds who don't have that life experience or understand that, as well as a nineteen year.
Either either lady, um, she's on, she's in an interview, I think it was ITV, and they said, you know, about a nineteen year old. And she said, uh, oh, my forty year old son can't even run a bath. And I thought, I thought, I thought that that didn't reflect bad on me.
Yes.
That's bad on you.
Yeah.
Bad pay, can't even, your forty year old son can't run a bath. God, what's the matter with you?
But one reason why.
Interesting anecdote, but still doesn't answer the question.
Why some people watching might be sceptical is because so many people have just gone straight from school to university to politics.
Hmm.
And they might look at a nineteen year old getting elected and thinking, oh no, another career politician just.
Oh no, another career politician. He he again, weird anecdote to begin with. Um. And then, of course, they're gonna ask, well, are you a career politician? He's nineteen and he's been immediately made um leader of the council. I think this guy is gonna have a massively inflated ego. Like, I think he's gonna, you know, the biggest swollen head there is, especially when he's getting so much favoritism from Farage. And I'm gonna have to wonder if that is gonna play into something else maybe later down the line. Maybe he ends up butting heads with someone like maybe Darren Grimes down the line. Who knows? Who knows? Yeah. One of the saddest things here is that Tim Stanley and Carmel Tommely are now regularly put forward as the Telegraph's star hard hitting journalists. That is true. That is very true. Why are they not being harder on him? This is honestly, at the moment, been some very, very softball questions that he isn't answering. He's dodging around the, dodging around the uh, the question afterwards. Uh, I would highly recommend looking at the comments afterwards. I I'm I'm sure the comments are all very pro and positive on him because I think he's shared this out to a lot of Reform people. I I think if there has been any bad comments, they've probably been drowned out by the Reform people. I suppose Leo Sapien, you do the consider it, of course, unkind to say something about, you said to someone younger, as traditionally, they can grow out of it. Youth is for making mistakes after all. Yeah, like being a Reform councillor or, you know, deciding you were going to run a a a council. Um, what Finch, of course, doesn't realise is that these interviewers have him on toast. Probably so, we'll see. Yeah, this youngster doesn't have the liberty of time though. Right, true. Um, if he butts heads, of course, with Darren Grimes, he'll need a lot of shampoo to get rid of all that grease. I, well, I'd be more maybe concerned about a fire breaking out. Because they both, both of them use a lot of hair products, by the looks of it. I'd be more one worried about an open flame. Maybe setting them on fire, to be honest. Anyway, let's continue.
Just wanted to be a politician.
No.
So how are you different? Are you here by accident or?
No, 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 look, look, it's it's simple. Look, look at my majority. I've got a one thousand one hundred majority, the biggest reform majority in Warwickshire. People in.
One thousand one hundred for a local council election. Hardly extraordinary. Hardly extraordinary. Um. So it wouldn't be something to brag about.
I've got a one thousand one hundred majority, the biggest reform majority in Warwickshire.
Did they also know that he was nineteen? How prominent was he during the local council elections? I don't think he was that prominent. I don't think a lot of people in Warwickshire knew who this guy was, that he was this young. I have a sneaking suspicion they didn't. Because he was not that, that, he was not that prominent, from what at least I can see, or at least I can tell during the the local council elections.
Pretty. I've got a one thousand one hundred majority, the biggest reform majority in Warwickshire. People in Bedworth Central voted for a young councillor because I was there from eleven o'clock in the morning till seven at night, speaking to people day in, day out, listening.
Was he? Was he? Any, any residents of Warwickshire care to comment on that? Again, uh, X to doubt on that one. Get out your, get out your controllers and be pressing X to doubt on that one. Let's sure on that one.
There's too many talking, too much talking and not enough listening. And that's the problem. That's the problem we've got in this day and age. There's too many people, all ages, all experienced. They're just doing too much talking and not a lot, not a lot of listening. And this is.
Oh, it's too much, too much talking, not enough listening. That, I I I don't know what what the like this phrase might be like for everyone else, but I'm sure that phrase to you gets uttered quite a lot. Appearing Yorkshire is quite a common phrase. Oh, there's not, too much, too much yapping, not enough listening. Or too much yapping. But then again, that is the common criticism pretty much levelled at most politicians. So once again, it's kind of funny that he is trying to position himself as like the outsider. Here's the problem, George. Here's the problem, Finchy. You are no longer the outsider. You are now the guy who is in charge of the council. So are you just yapping all that time? Or are you actually doing anything? Because so far in this interview, we are, what, six minutes in? And he has not talked about any of his policies when there has been, there has been ample opportunity thrown at him to talk about his policies. And as he said, judging by the job they do. So far, he's not doing that good a job in this interview. We'll see, we'll see how this interview goes. If he was on people's doorsteps from eleven in the morning till seven at night, people would have probably thought he was a Jehovah's Witness. Um, lies, no teenager is willingly up at eleven AM. True.
The point is, we sit around the table and I'm not calling all the shots, doing everything for car. So if I'm sat in a meeting regarding hospitality sector, I will speak to the hospitality advisor that we're gonna get or speak to people on the ground, speak to pub owners, managers, listening.
You mean what politicians do all the time? Like, this, this honestly is populist rhetoric at its, at its maximum. We are the outsiders. They're not listening to you. I'm listening to you. Thing is now, he's the insider. He is the elite that he railed against. Thing is now, he's the insider. He is the elite that he railed against. You can't really run that messaging honestly anymore, George. Doesn't cut the mustard anymore, especially when you are the one in charge. Maybe if he was like, I don't, I don't know, lead of the opposition. Maybe this would still pass muster, but not at this time. It's leader of the council. You know, leader of the, the group. He's, he's, they're not the political outsiders. They're the ones in power. You, you can't run this messaging. Doesn't, doesn't work anymore. When you are the one in charge.
Is the main skill here. And that's just what, that's the whole country's forgot to listen.
So tell us about your journey then, because you want to.
That's it. The whole, whole country's just forgot to listen.
To be a history teacher. You tried out uni but found it too woke and left, is that right?
It was a complete nightmare.
Why?
Which university?
You, he tried out uni and found that it was a complete woke nightmare. Um. Someone out there. Someone out there needs to find out. Did anyone meet him during his uni years and interview him? And ask them questions. What was he like? I mean. So, so strange. Honestly, so, so strange. Yeah. They're saying, yeah. Yeah, his stance is completely wrong for the room, for the conversation and for the position that he's in. Yeah. Yeah, nightmare university. Where's that? Now, dare he say which university it was.
Too woke and left, is that right?
It was a complete nightmare.
Why?
Which university was it?
Leicester. Leicester, it is a good uni, you know, really.
Leicester Uni. Now, I didn't go to Leicester Uni, I went to DMU. I'm a, I'm a DMU boy. Not a, not a Leicester Uni. Uh, I could, I could crank out the old DMU chant. Um. But I knew people from, from Leicester Uni as well. I doubt it's changed that much. Uh, I doubt honestly uni is, is any woke at, at all, but we'll see what he has to say about his allegations that, oh, it's, it's, it's woke.
Um, which university was it?
Leicester. Leicester, it is a good uni, you know, really, really focused on, um, getting the best grades for their students. But it was the attitude, um, of university. Uh, what really threw me off straight away is, um, they had an astrophysics, physics, um, lecture, um. Nothing to do with me, but you hear it in the, in the, in the university that, uh, these free Palestinians went in, kind of held hostage these lecture hall, screaming free, free Palestine because they were learning one tiny subsection of a module on interconnected, uh, interconnected ballistic missiles.
Right.
And they're like, you're gonna send those to Palestine and Israel? You know, the world's gone mad.
Again, did that happen? I, I'm, I'm very much again pressing X to doubt on that. Very much pressing X to doubt on that. Do you? I- is there a module on, on intercontinental ballistic missiles? Do we, do we know any, any former graduates from? I do, actually. I'll, 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 no, he's, he's an American now. He probably won't be able to answer. But yeah, I couldn't ask him that question. Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah. Interconnected ballistic missiles. So he, he got upset that apparently pro-Palestine people came in and, and took over a, a lecture hall. And that made it too woke for him. Again, I'm also pressing X to doubt over that module. Because I, I don't know, if you were learning about, would you learn about, um, intercontinental ballistic missiles? But yeah, uh, Shanks, you bring up a good point as well. Leicester, maybe it's, um, maybe it's because Leicester has a high Muslim community. Again, when I was there, had a very, still, well, not just a high Muslim, uh, community, but Sikh community as well. Um. Yeah, maybe, yeah, maybe it was just that, that he didn't like. Maybe it was just that. Although the weirdos I always found, the weirdos I always found when I was at DMU was the Christian Society. I, I, I don't know. I always found them very weird. But that was just my thing when I was there at DMU. Um. Yeah, true, yeah. I'm sure why would, of course, blame the university for pro-Palestine protesting physics? Yeah, I. Again, weird. Uh, all the world lived experience of this guy. Is he Benjamin Ethington? Oh.
And then they, then they did criminal damage and sprayed graffiti on the wall. Then when they come into the history, um, and the politics lecture, they.
Hold on, let's look this up. Uni. Leicester University, um, pro test. Uh, let's try that, yeah. So Leicester University protests to stop, to stop classes. Oh, no, no, here you are. But that was in November of two thousand and four. Would he have been there in two thousand and four? Maybe. Maybe he would have been there because that's the only time when I can find it. Um. So they reported there was an occupation which involved erecting barricades which posed a risk to life that necessitated police involvement. Uh, students were then suddenly granted police bail, with campus restrictions, placed in temporary exclusion pertaining to investigation. So again, maybe he was there. Maybe he was there when it all went down. Who knows? Maybe, maybe he was there when it all went down. Who knows? But seems, seems to me it's just a, a good, nice little story. You can tell just how woke university was, wasn't for him, wasn't for him. Anyway, one second. I'm just gonna take a quick break and we'll be back in a moment. So see you all in a moment. Ah, we're back. There we go. Yeah. Uh, so yeah, in, in twenty twenty-four, uh, not, not two thousand and four, um, twenty twenty-four. Uh, apparently this, this happened, this, this incident, where I've looked it up. Um. Nineteen, maybe, but I don't know, weird. Weird that he's just bringing it up, that's all. Um. But apparently the university was just too woke, not for him. One protest put him off.
The, the lecture was like, oh, it's a shame what the, the, the chancellor, they've, they've let them get arrested. We need to write a letter to the chancellor to, to fight this and get them released. Like, they've just committed criminal damage. But this, the point is that unis are just too busy about how people feel. And how they, oh, it's all about their feelings. We need people that, oh, I feel this, it's, I think this, and this is what I want to do. And you sit in all the education establishments we've got, there's too many people, too many kids being asked, oh, were you okay today? Or, or.
What's wrong with asking if kids are okay? Like, generally, what's, what, what's wrong? What's wrong with teaching kids emotional intelligence? I mean, before the pandemic, I had, I had a job, um. I used to work for a company called, uh, Teen Plus. I was their marketing, uh, marketing guy. Um, part of our, the stuff the company did was they would go in to schools in around the area and they would help kids with mental health, wellbeing and resilience. Because it was a big thing that kids were missing. Again, that was like pre-pandemic. I highly suspect that post-pandemic, it's probably become an even more important, uh, thing that they're trying to help teach, teach more of these. What's wrong? What's wrong with with helping kids teach them like that? But. Anyway, into the comments. Um. Darren, so he went to university, didn't want to learn anything or meet people with different views to his own, and then he quit because he couldn't hack it, probably. I, I highly suspect that that may be it. Because from what, again, when I was at uni, it was all about, you know, you do your work, you hand your stuff in, you get on the stuff. That's what you would do. Uh, yeah, pull your boots up mentally. Um. But he has a, a send family member. Yeah, exactly. Kind of, kind of odd, isn't it? That's, that's very odd, isn't it, Shanks? Very indeed. Good point on that. Uh, oh, hang on. So Billy, when I worked at Durham Uni, student care was paramount. Yeah. Like, student care at uni is and always has been a big point. Always has been. Because you've got to remember that most students, most students that go to university, very often it's like their first proper time away from home for a potential long period of time. So of course, student care is gonna be a priority. But now, doesn't seem to get it. Doesn't seem to get it all, this. Not one bit.
How do you feel? How do you feel about learning this? You know, are you sure if we can do this, do that? You're in a class to learn. Get your grades, then you can leave university.
And they do, but they also go, um, we also want to make sure that your mental health and wellbeing is also pretty good as well. Yeah. When I was going through very tough, uh, tough times at secondary school, uh, twenty years ago, my school were of course excellent and helped me. How Finch doesn't see this is unbelievable. Yeah. That's, that's always been a, a, a part of of, of schools, what they do. They do help and, and try and look after the wellbeing of their students. Why doesn't he, he see this? Why, why hasn't he acknowledged that? If, if I was interviewing him, this came up, I would put this question to him. But again, I'm not interviewing him sadly. And, uh, yet these two people aren't gonna ask him those questions and hit him hard on that either.
Should be a beacon of freedom of speech. It should be a place where you can feel to, to express, to be able to say what you want to say and not be shouted down. And what it is, it.
Well, what are they saying that might get them shouted down? You know? Um, also, again, I, I don't know if it's still there, but I do remember that Leicester Uni had a debate society. Don't know if that's still a thing, but I remember when I was at DMU, they had, um, regularly would have debates with the Leicester Uni lot. Again, freedom of speech is alive and well on campuses, but as always, if it's not the things they want to hear, then that's when it's, oh, that's when we're being silenced. We're. Anyway. Uh, Kevin, right-wingers, of course, believe in the survival of the fittest, not in cooperation. So the mindset is of course very predatory. Uh, so any compassion is of course a sign of weakness and brainwashing against ideology. Yep. Uh. Remember, people have him as an authoritarian bent, uh, do as I say, not as I do. Yep. Yeah, hold on, wait, he's inside of protesters now. Again, very true. Yeah, again, contradiction there. Someone did, I think it was somewhere else did say there was gonna be a lot of contradictions in this video. Um, yeah, freedom of speech, of course, does not mean freedom of disagreement. Again, very true. Very true. People, the, the biggest whiners about that are always the ones who forget that. Uh, so anyway, let's continue.
It's a, it's a coercive curriculum. It's a conveyor belt for, it's a conveyor belt for communists. And this is the problem with our university.
It's a conveyor belt for communists. My follow-up to that, my follow-up that would have been to ask him, um. At what point were communist teachings taught to these students? Can you provide any lessons that would talk to these? What on earth? A conveyor belt for communists? Did you go to Leicester Uni? Did you come out with a, with a, with a yushanka and a red star, star and sickle? You can claim to. That's, um, that's just incredibly weird. That is an incredibly weird way to phrase that. Incredibly weird.
These, it's a lot, been allowed to just get out of control. It's because they've opened the doors for uni, everyone can go. And the kids just think it's a jolly. They're out getting slammed every bloody day and they're, they're not doing the coursework on the modules.
Oh, well, hang on a minute, George.
Having, of course, having a course being to uni myself, um, yeah. The motto you should take to uni is, um, you know, uh, work hard, play hard. If you do your work, you can go out and play. And a lot of people do that. But it is also one of the big things that causes a lot of people at uni to have problems. Hence why, you know, taking care of students is a good thing. Anyway. Yeah, can't imagine on Finch being on something like Question Time, he'd be exposed easily. Yeah, none, none of these people are going on Question Time. None of these people are going on Question Time. It is, it's always, as we've always said, no one will be on Question Time to represent Reform other than Nigel Farage or Richard Tice. Because they know that. Because they know that if someone else goes on there, they could mess it all up. They're the ones who have been really, immediately savvy trained to go on those shows and do a lot of prep work beforehand to, to make sure they don't mess up. They can't trust it to someone like Georgie here to do that. Although it is shocking that he has done this interview, although he's been okayed to do this interview as well.
Finch, you must have got slammed a few times, you're a young man, you must go out on a lash.
There'll be nothing wrong with that, as long as you can wake up the next day and do work afterwards, you know, there's nothing wrong with that. You can have a few pints in the pub or a glass of red wine and you can, if you're working the next day and you, you, you know what you're doing, fine.
But isn't it a bit?
A bit weird on one hand to be, oh, that's really bad, you know, going out on a lash, but, oh, you know, if you can go and have a few drinks and you could. Can't keep, can't keep his mind straight on that. Yeah. Another contradiction.
Weird, like the peers that you grew up with, the boys and girls that you went to school with, they're probably.
Still getting slammed.
Still getting slammed, becoming communist.
Most of them would just be waking up and having breakfast.
Exactly, and here you are suited and booted, running a county council.
Yeah, yeah, speaking to my mates, you know, mate, Harry works in a chip shop, you know, but I would class him, he, he'd been in it for four years, you know what he's doing there? You know, I've got mates, Evie, she works in a, in a bar, you know, they're, they're doing things that people their age do, I've just gone down a different path.
You don't feel you're missing out on them?
Good that they've got employment, I suppose, you know, good for them. I don't, I don't even know what to, to, to like respond to that, oh. So your friends are employed. Yay, for them.
Oh, no, no.
Your teenage years.
No, I've, I've had all that, I've had all those questions, are you missing out? No, I can still go down to the pub, I'll be with my councillors. And, and it really, you know, no, I'd never say I've missed out, you know, you've always got time to be able to go back to the real world. I'm not hundred percent this all the time because I'm not a robot, I'm not a machine. That's what drives people insane and actually then you do become a career politician, if you're not real.
So these career politicians are, are, are career politicians and robots because they don't go down to the pub enough. Did, did I, did I get that right? Did, did, did that, is that how that came, comes across? Because that's a bit odd, that's a bit odd. That's why they're career politicians, if only, if only they'd go down to the pub more often. Kind of weird, kind of weird on that one. Yeah, yeah. Does he know of the drinking stories in Parliament? Does he, does he know how many bars it has? Um, I bet all his friends are of course entirely grateful that they don't sit in the pub discussing politics with him all night. Very, very true on that one. Um, George Glee likes his beer. Uh, I would vote for AI over Reform UK any day, already saving councils. Oh. Anyway, let's continue with this weirdness.
If you don't go to the pub and speak to people or go on the streets or speak to people, the shop owners, if you don't do that, then they're not going to vote you in because you're not real. You've gone to the Ivory Tower, which is Warwick, compared to the people of Bedworth, I said it on the doorstep, you will be sent to the Ivory Tower and they'll try and make us say what they want to say and we'll, we'll say no and we'll want to do what you ask us to do, which.
Again, weird way. Weird way to, to be describing this council, oh yes, you'll be sent to the Ivory Tower of Warwick. Uh, how many, how many, how many surgeries have his reform councillors run? How many, how many surgeries has, has his reform fellow reform councillors run? How many surgeries has he run? In his constituency? I, I have a strange feeling it might not be that many. You know, how is, how is he doing with his constituency work? You know, again, part of the job. I, I have a sneaking suspicion he's not doing all that well with it.
Which is why we're, we're starting this press conference of recalibrating Warwickshire, which is based on what the people have asked us to do.
One reason why I find this fresh, refreshing is because quite often when younger people are elected, they want to bang on about.
Yeah. This is, this is it, Chanks, I, I, I keep on saying it, I said it earlier. He's doing this whole thing of it's us versus the elite. The problem then becomes, he is now the elite, he is now the elected, um, representative. He is now the very elite he's railing against. Very weird. Very weird, to be honest. Not in the mind of the voters, you say, eventually it will, eventually it will, you cannot run on that forever. This idea that you are like the permanent outsider, once you are elected, that, that ends. Like, once you are elected, you, you really shouldn't be running on that, you really should not be running on that one.
Being young, so the entire generation could be spoken for, but not any of you reluctant to be regarded as just a young politician. And I'm sorry, we keep talking about it, but it's fascinating, it's really interesting. But you're also critical of your own generation and the way they're being raised. Are there a lot of other young people who feel the same? Should we stop in assuming young people are all green and Corbynites? Is there actually a reform wave coming among that generation who are tired of being told what to think and?
Not according to the recent polls, you saw that, that, uh, reform have lost a large percentage on that. Um, don't know if you'll bring that up.
Uh, coddled.
I think you, you, what you'll see, Tim, is in six forms, um, up and down the country, is that when you're into, in your politics class, there'll be young girls and young men that will sit there and they'll listen to what the teacher's got to say. And then when they listen, then they form their own opinions of, I don't, I don't agree with that. Why are we paying for things that?
That, they're doing the revolutionary thing of sitting there and listening to their teacher. How? How revolutionary, sitting, sitting there and thinking, hmm, I'm, I'm listening and I'm learning from my teacher. Brain of the generation. Brain of our generation, George Finch.
X amount of people get when, why don't? And they'll sit there and they'll, they'll evolve. And this is the problem with the education system, they're putting the dampers on that evolution. They're putting the dampers on actually the thought process, the, the growing up period of kids, the playground politics, the jokes they make, the way they become a man or a woman, that's being stopped, but it'll get to a breaking.
How? What exactly, what dampeners? This is where you need to push back on it because this is, this is culture war nonsense, this is culture war BS, where if you push back on it, it makes the, the, makes these types of people look absolutely weird or pathetic that they care so much about this.
Point for these young people, it'll get to a breaking point of these people in education where they'll go, I've had enough. You're, you're doing, you're telling us what to think and you're failing it. You've got a generation of young people that are not educated, actually, when they go into the real world, they'll fail because they haven't got that independent thinking process. They'll be straight out the conveyor belt.
They'll be straight out of the conveyor. So going deaf, going from like secondary school into like college or sixth form, it very, very much becomes all about independent thought. You know, you go to your lecture, you hear what your lecturer has got to say, you write your essays, you base it on, 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 on like your evidence and what you think and what you say, what you see about this stuff. Independent thought is valued so much in universities. Anyone who's been to university knows that. Or if you know someone who works in a university, they will tell you that as well. Or someone who is a teacher in sixth form or that, they will tell you that. Unbelievable, but yeah, this is his, again, bizarre warped view of the current education system. I wonder where he's got it all from.
They'll get the, the, they'll, they'll get the grades, they'll get all the stuff and they come out of that education, boom. They've dropped into a sinkhole because they don't know how to ask the, the canteen lady for ketchup because they're too embarrassed. I've seen it all before, they go, George, can, can you ask me? Can, can you ask them to get your, put vinegar on your chips? Grow up, grow a pair, do it yourself, it's ridiculous.
What? So, according to George Finch, all these people going to university are terrified of asking people for ketchup. I mean, that's just the highlight of this interview right there, the fact that he thinks that, Jesus. Um. Do we need to go on? Do we need to go on? That he thinks other people his age are just terrified, you, you go to university and you become terrified to ask for ketchup. The more you hear these people talk, and this is, this is bear in mind, does he receive a salary from his position? Yes, Billy, he does, he does very, very much receive a salary from his position. Um. This is why you normally do not see these people given, you know, put in front of journalists, put in front of cameras. This is, this is crazy. This is a crazy excerpt from this interview that he thinks that. Um. Yeah. I think Karma Tommy is getting embarrassed, how will I make this, this guy look sane? And this is, this is it, this is all the thing, this is why I don't go into the culture war stuff because these people already make themselves look bad. I, I, I don't have to do anything, it would be the easiest form of like nothing content, that's why I don't do it. Because it would just be too easy. But when they, when they go off on, on stuff like this, saying that people of their generation can't order, you know, ketchup because they've been to university. Jesus. I want to meet George Finch down in Dark Alley based on this.
Ridiculous, and this is the problem with the woke cardiology, is that they're letting kids just, oh, no, it's okay to not ask, you might have anxiety. No, you just need to break that barrier, let them express themselves and it will solve the problem itself. You just shouldn't have teachers and the curriculum holding kids down, they need.
How? Doing what? It all goes back to who said it. Who said it? Let me go back. In the comments, where is it? This is it, yes, Kevin, there you are. All goes back to this comment. Right-wingers believe in the survival of the fittest, not in cooperation, so the mindset is predatory, so any compassion then becomes a sign of weakness and brainwashing against their ideology. Yep. Can't, can't teach people about kindness, can't people teach about, you know, compassion or anything like that, oh. Might be woke. This is nonsense, genuine nonsense. I can't wait to see if the people in, uh, like the education roles try and put their foot in stuff like this. I can't wait to see if they put their foot into something like this. It'd be very interesting to see if they do, very interesting to see if they start doing that. But I somehow, somehow suspect they won't. I think that's just a far too big, much kettle of fish for them to, to even attempt to dare to step into.
Need to be able to, to freely think and voice their opinions. And if that may be, uh, wrong, so be it, but that doesn't then turn into a disciplinary action and then complaints, then being kicked out of the school, the kids, the parents need to be taught to grow up, frankly.
You were elected, uh, on May the first, with sixty-two percent of the vote?
Yes.
Which is remarkable.
Biggest majority for a Reform councillor in Warwickshire.
But we need to explain, you were not elected as leader of the Reform group, you were deputy at the time?
Well, when I was elected in May, um, we then all went in, the twenty-three of us.
Yeah, so this is it, he wasn't even, again, I'm, I'm not familiar with the Warwickshire campaign, but as far as I, I'm, I, I know, he wasn't that bigger figure, he wasn't that prominent. I wonder how many people actually knew he was nineteen? Genuine question, I wonder how many people actually generally knew he was nineteen? Genuine question, I don't think a lot of people would knew on that one.
As just councillors. Um, and then, I can't remember exactly the dates, but then Rob Howard became the leader of the group.
Origin story, yeah.
The council. But I was voted as the deputy leader of the, the group and then appointed as the deputy leader of the council. And then forty days later, however many days later, uh, Rob stepped down, um, because of health issues. And then I stepped up as my constitutional powers, then as interim leader. And then voted as the group leader, then as the council leader.
Right, not going to bring, again, I, these reporters should bring up, should bring up the fact that the vote was tied. They should bring up the fact the vote was tied. Absolutely. It's this Paul Fletcher. Uh, get George along to have a, a chat with, uh, with Qasim Qasim, I think that's how you say it, a professor of philosophy, uh, at the Warwick, University of Warwick, uh, an author of Voices of the Mind, which is election on his boss Nigel, ooh. Might have to see, see that out, see what that's like. But yeah, kind of, um, again, so weird the second with us, but I would, if I were these, I would bring up the fact, well, what happened in that vote? I would be very bringing up the fact that you weren't voted unanimously, it was a split vote, twenty, twenty-three versus twenty-three. And because, depending on which way the conservatives have gone, they allowed this to happen, you know, always remember that, those conservatives allowed this to happen. For god knows what reason, they allowed this to happen.
Right, and that's a permanent thing unless something changes.
So council leader, uh, if you've got a majority, um, well, no, i- in, in the constitution, council leader's there for four years.
Right.
Um, so in a way, yes, um, as a group, we, we vote leaders every year. Um, so in a way, yes, um, as a group, we, we vote leaders every year to.
I'm going to have to speed this up. We're also going to be here all day.
If, if anyone wants to come up, they've got that ability to, um, then if that happens, then you have to then go to full council and change it.
So you are speaking in my mind.
So yeah, I wonder why Rob Howard is thinking of this farce. Who knows? Who knows?
As a kind of archetypal Thatcherite Tory boy in a way, right? You know, everything you're saying about self-governance, self-reliance, get ahead, have aspiration, work hard, hard work leads to success. Why did you make the transition from being a conservative to thinking reform was the answer? And how much influence does Nigel Farage as an individual have on your decision-making on that?
Very good question, very good question indeed. Let's see what he has to say about this.
Uh, in Bedworth, my hometown, it was originally coal mining, mine as well, fair park, um, uh, economy was based on coal mines. So we would be traditionally Labour and my dad voted Labour, voted Jeremy Corbyn, uh, because he didn't want Theresa May.
Right.
God, would he want Theresa May? But then when it went to twenty nineteen, you see the difference in the way people voted. And our town were traditionally Labour, um, through and through, but the problem that we found with Labour is they completely just lost self-respect and lost their complete vote base. And that's why they've imploding themselves. It's like a, it's like a seed we plant as reform into different parties for them to blow themselves up to the Tories. But when, um, when I was younger, it.
Didn't ask anything about Labour, but there you go, pre-prepared, pre-prepared answers. Just clear evidence of, 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 uh, pre-prepared answers though, uh, on that one.
Was, it was in the householders, you know, EU, you know, voting, yeah, what are we going to do in the referendum? And mum and dad went, right, we need to leave. And it wasn't on the basis of necessarily the economical parts of Brexit. It was more the sovereign, the sovereignty, the, oh, you go to your own people. Oh, no, it's not me, it's Europe. It's simply, you go to Europe. And that's the problem. You need to hold your own politicians to account here and now. And that's why they voted for Brexit. That's why then they, unfortunately, like many people in the United Kingdom in twenty nineteen, were sold a pack of lies by Boris. We're going to get an oven-ready deal, we're going to get it done, get Brexit done. And we've seen a disaster that, that's, uh, alluded to Brexit. We haven't had it. It's not happened.
Interesting that he's commenting now, bear in mind, bear in mind, this is, as far as I am aware, the only time we have heard someone from Reform talk about Brexit for quite some time. I, me thinks he might get in trouble for this. Me thinks he might be in trouble for this.
Uh, we haven't got our proper Brexit powers that we wanted, uh, when we left.
Did mum and dad vote for Boris Johnson?
Yes, they did. They voted for the Conservatives in twenty nineteen, uh, because it was the only party that was suitable to vote, uh, to get us out of the European Union properly. Because Nigel, again, he has no ego. He stepped aside in that election to allow the bigger party that were going to do it, going to win. He allowed them to do it with the promise of you'll leave the European Union, you'll do it the way we want to do it. And Boris.
And he backed the deal, which now, of course, in typical Brexiteer fashion, was never enough. Brexit, remember, you've always got to remember for Brexiteers, what they got was never enough. They would not be satisfied until they have like Angela Merkel or, you know, pick your EU politician like kissing the feet of Nigel Farage. And then being, you know, booted out of, of, of the country in some sort of like symbolic ceremony. There you go.
Boris again, didn't bumble in Boris, lied.
I was going to ask George who he voted for. He wasn't old enough to.
No.
But, but yeah, can I just pick you up on one thing? Farage has no ego.
Yeah, and the alarm bell rang when I heard.
Yeah, Farage has no ego. Good point.
No, honestly, I think, I think what we see with Richard Tice, he stepped aside to allow Nigel because he knew that Nigel can take us the next step forward. I think Nigel's the.
No, he knew that Nigel would get the votes. That's why he stepped aside.
Same. He allowed Boris to go, Joe Watt, you.
Yeah, and he agreed, he, Farage agreed with Boris's deal at the time. And then, of course, it became, oh no, this deal is just terrible. This deal is, is be no, it's Brexit in name only. Remember, they call it that still. And even now, it does not matter, does not matter with the fact that, you know, you've got Keir Starman doing the EU reset very, very goodly, by the way, very, very good, uh, on that front. Actually improving the situation. Which shows, actually, it's good for us to have, you know, closer links, look at all the polls, et cetera. Now, never, never had, never had proper Brexit. Okay, what's proper Brexit? Silence, dead silence, crickets. Yeah. Love how he thinks Farage has no ego instead of no sense of responsibility. Very true, very true in that one.
You, you do this and we'll sit back from the sidelines. But they completely messed it up. So Nigel went, I'm the only guy to do it. And he's right. He said he's the only guy to do it. He's been banging on about this for thirty years. Nigel Farage has been the biggest.
And what's his plan to do it? It's, there's no plan there. There's no plan there whatsoever, except to like, I, I don't know, just annoy the EU and hope for the best. There's no plan there. There's no plan there whatsoever.
His political operator of the United Kingdom in the last thirty years, he's changed the course of history, one man. I think that's just, I mean, he could, I definitely, I can't wait for him to be Prime Minister. It will, he's like, he deserves that. After the fight he's had over the last thirty years, that is a man that actually deserves to have the, the title of Prime Minister. Keir Starmer doesn't.
He really does not. He really does not deserve it at all. Uh, Farage has never, ever taken any responsibility for anything he's ever advocated for. And when he's had power, like when he was an MEP, when he was an MP now, he's not used it. Not advocated for it. He's actively promoted and pushed policies that most people in the UK would not want. You know, George Finch apparently has got his, you know, sister who's got send issues, apparently quite severe that he's had to spend time in, you know, NHS waiting rooms and, and, and places like that that have been really terrible. Do his parents have enough money? If, if the NHS was, was a, like for-profit model, if it was an insurance-based model, does his parents have the money to be able to pay for the care? I don't think they do. Again, a question you should be bringing up to him on that one.
They didn't vote for him. They just didn't endorse the Tories. And he slipped through. But Nigel deserves it. The hard work he's done, the party, the, the mechanics of Reform UK. God, Nigel deserves it. And the hard work everybody does in this party is, it's phenomenal.
Does your own interest in history inform your politics?
Uh, a lot of the time, yeah. Because what I'd see is that we can't allow the way, what happened in the, the sixties, the seventies to allow to carry on. For instance, back, back then.
I, I love it. We are, uh, we are a socialist country. This is what I always, this is what I always love. You, you get a lot of people on the left who say, we are not a, a, a socialist country at all anymore. Then you get people on the right like this, who is literally about to say, we are too socialist. Where are we? Where are we on this scale?
And people are allowed, you, you could, you could buy your own home, you could buy a car. Go on, are they? Young people like me, we can't. We, we, we have to really work, not just work hard, but effectively break our backs to get where we are. And that's the problem with the society that we've got now, is that the government, Labour, Conservatives.
And you've had fourteen years of, of Tory rule, Tory austerity that have done a lot of damage to this country. Is he going to bring it out? Is he going to bring up the fact that Nigel Farage agreed with a lot of that stuff? Don't think so.
Allowed us to go down this hole that we, it's going to be bloody hard to dig us out of it. And Nigel's the only guy I believe can do it.
How much have you got a sort of Britain First attitude? Because we know you've had a row with the chief executive of the council here, Monica Fogarty, about the pride flag flying. You've insisted that the only flags that should be flying outside this building are a George's flag, a Union flag, or indeed the flag of Warwickshire. Um, we sort of saw this press conference on Tuesday at Oxford Airport. I saw you there. We were both there covering this deportation plan, this.
Yeah. If we've learned anything from this, is this young lad has been brainwashed now into the cult of Farage. I worry for him. Yeah, he is absolutely been. He is, he's a full-on Farage puppet. Yeah. Puppet on the strings. Exactly. I, I absolutely would, would say that. He is absolutely being puppeted. You notice, do it respond to that question? How much power does Nigel Farage have over him? You know, it's, he's dodged that question.
This operation, Restore Justice. And of course, Reform will always be tarred with the, their xenophobes, their racists, their bigots brush. Where do you stand on all that stuff?
Well, look at Nigel. He was, again, the only person that stood up to the BNP back in the early two thousand, uh, the late two thousands, destroyed them. Nigel is the only man that has been fighting the far right.
No, what he did was he made, you know, there's all the crazy racists. I'm more the middle class option for you. You know, I'm the, you know, wink, wink, nudge, nudge. You know, middle class racism that you see in the UK. That's what Nigel embodied. That was the socially acceptable form of racism. And that's what Nigel Farage did. That's what he's always done. He's embodied that. That's why he has always stayed away from, uh, the BNP, from people like Tommy Robinson. Because he knows that will damage his brand, that will damage his image. That's why he's, you know, that's why he's not going to go for.
And he's the guy that's been doing what we need to do to actually get a sensible conversation of immigration. I was in the kitchen with my uncle and he's staunch Unionist Labour Corbynite, right? Lovely bloke, but, you know. And we actually had a proper decent conversation about immigration. And he agreed with some of the things that Reform was saying.
Again, nice anecdote, but.
Because it makes sense. My grandma can't get dental care. It's too expensive. Fifty quid. Can't afford that.
Your grandma can't get dental care fifty quid mostly because it's, you have to pay for it. Nigel Farage wants an insurance-based system. If your grandma cannot pay fifty quid for dental care, what about all the other medical costs your grandma might generally have to pay for? Georgie, Finchey boy.
And you've got asylum seekers that are put up in hotels that get free dental care. I, I, if you speak to the people in Bedworth and Nantita.
Guess what? You get free dental care now. It's on the NHS.
You tell them that. You'll get your response. And it will be, we can't pay. We can, why? My grandma don't get it. It's not fair. No.
No, your grandma does get dental care. It's on the NHS. The biggest problem, the biggest problem is that there are not enough dentists on the NHS. They're all going to private practice. Why? Because that's where the money is. That's where all the money is. That's the, that's the biggest problem. Because all the dentists go, immediately go to a private practice. I went to the dentist not that long ago. Um, what was my bill? Oh. Uh, I had a check up and a clean, so I believe it was hundred and hundred and twenty. Which is quite expensive, bear in mind, every six months. Yeah, very true. It's a big problem. NHS dentistry, huge problem. Huge problem. I agree with you on that one. Huge problem.
Broke their back to work hard, to get a good family, to get a roof above their heads. And what do they get for it when they're sixty and they've retired? Taxed and hit again and hit again, winter fuel allowance gone. It's the point.
Yeah.
I mean, what's the problem with the pride flag?
It wasn't the pride flag that was the problem. It's the pro- progress pride flag, which, which is the one that was flying above, uh.
Ah, this is new. This is new. Wasn't the pride flag that was the problem. It was the progress pride flag that was the problem. That's new. Because of course, can't be anti-gay. But it's fine for him to be anti-trans. Because again, progress pride flag includes that.
Shy horse.
How long had it been up there?
Oh.
For a month. Was it like a permanent presence or was it?
No, 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 no. Um, so it got, so what was there beforehand was the Union flag, the Ukrainian flag. And that was it. Union flag.
So whose decision was it?
So when, when we came in as an administration, Union flag, Ukrainian flag, the third one was empty.
Right.
Was that true? Can't remember now. I don't know. Don't know the specifics of that. No, just to comment on that. But I have a feeling that might not be true.
Didn't we, then we asked for the Union flag, the St. George's flag to be put up. That was hard enough, but we got it over the line.
So, so can I ask, when you say it's hard enough, who, who said no or who, or who dragged their feet?
This is where I wonder if the, the council executive will come out and get and said, um, no, it wasn't at all. Because I believe they are still the ones in control over what flags go up and down. Um. And we'll see what happens when they try and bring this to a vote. I believe this is something they're going to try, be trying, doing very soon on this, uh, which will be interesting to watch for sure.
It was, it took a while for it to get done and, and maybe that's council bureaucracy, but I doubt that. But, you know, so when it was, uh, Pride Month or week or whatnot, the discussion was had with the old leader, will, can the pride flag be flown? And, and we said, well, look, it doesn't represent whole of Warwickshire. Um, it represents a minority of people, but it didn't represent the whole of Warwickshire. So.
Do you not have LGBT people in, in, in Warwickshire?
We come, we had a count, we had a group come to an agreement that the Union flag, St. George's and the Warwickshire flag should always be flown. Um, with exceptions to the Armed Forces flag or Royal Standards. Um, and we're putting a, um.
Uh, not initially, not initially, they got that wrong. That, that was something they added later. So he's, he's changing his story on that one as well. Also not bringing them up on the Ukrainian flag. Like, why, why aren't we allowed to fly the Ukrainian flag in, in solidarity for what's going on in Ukraine? Question for that, George. What do you think about that? What do you think about the Ukrainian conflict?
Flag policy through the cabinet on the fourth of September, which states that it's chairman's discretion. We're taking flags out the hands of politics, out the hands of non-elected bureaucrats and into the hands of a non-elected, sorry, an elected but non-political chairman. And he will decide which, uh, flag goes up when it does.
Reminder, reminder for you all, the chairman, the chairman is a Reform person. So I, I, I wonder, I wonder what flags he will choose to fly.
Okay, and then?
Then the flag, the progress pride flag went up. Um, and instantly, the old leader was like, no, no, no. This, this is wrong. You know, we want those three flags. Oh, but you know, we need to make sure that we listen to all communities, all that community cohesion.
Sorry, what's the difference between a progress pride flag and a pride flag?
It's got the, um, the triangle with the, other, other, other things. Yeah. And that's the point, is that that represents such a minority of people in Warwickshire, but it.
That's the point. You've just said why they were doing it. It's to bring the community together. That even though these people might be a minority, that you are saying is okay to be that in this, you know, in this county. This is again, culture war stuff rots people's brains completely.
We don't have, um, flags for other things, men's mental health, send needs, things that actually do need to be looked at differently. Um, you don't have those flags. No.
Um. Then why not ask or, or even make those flags then? And, and you can. Then why not ask or, or even make those flags then? And, and you can fly them. Why, why did they not go that, that direction?
They won't be the first thing that they want to fly. I'll know. It'll be progress pride flag. Why is the acceptance so clear, clear that that should be put up?
Because it's the most representative thing. Because you're not just celebrating the LGB. You've got the Ts, the Qs, the pluses, the et cetera. You're celebrating everyone. It's what's called the progress pride flag. Because we have made progress in this area.
That's the problem. And when I say, you know, those three flags that should be flying, that's because that represents everybody in Warwickshire.
Still not bringing up the Ukrainian one, but you know, again, we need to, should be, should be focusing on that one.
All those 600,000 people, no one is not represented by those three flags. So that's why they're so important.
So Reform said the flag must come down?
Yeah.
But then what's wrong with having some representation for those people? It's part of the right wing stuff for this is that they want to just push these people away. Because LGBT and all this other stuff has gained a lot of extra prominence in the past couple of years. They want to sort of push all that back. They want to push it, wind it all back in. Because they don't like it. Why? Oh, it just makes them, makes them feel weird. Again, culture war stuff rots people's brains. But this is where it is.
And we said, um, we said the flag must come down. Then it was, no, that's not your, then I said, I become leader, interim leader, and I said, the flag needs to come down. Oh, no, that's not your power. I said, well, it is. It's executive power. It needs to come down. Oh, no, not really. And then I asked if she had planning permission.
Who is the she? Sorry.
Miss Fogarty.
Chief executive.
I said, does the council have planning permission to fly the progress pride flag?
Did he generally ask this? I don't know.
Her answer was, we don't need it. The answer is, you don't have it. So it wasn't there legally, which is a different matter completely, but.
Wha- what? That was their argument? Ah, you don't have got, okay, right. That is, that is very interesting, that. That's very interesting. When they fly a flag, the question should be asked, do you have planning permission? Fire it back right at them. Fire that, fire that ammo right back at them.
When I asked for it to be taken down, it wasn't at my instruction, which is the biggest frustration that we had. Um, but then it later did come down because of the end of pride. But the point still states that it's not about flags. It's about the non-elected bureaucrat that is telling an elected leader what to do and what not to do regarding an executive power.
Why do you care so much about that? Who cares? You've got bigger duties than, than, than flags. Why, why do you care? Oh, but we, we, we need to get these, these flags. Well, what about, you know, people from that, that, that minority that live in your thing? What does it say that you think about their priorities? Doesn't it all, does it? But again, they don't understand. They don't get it.
That's the point. That's the key point. Um, the way we, we handled that and tackled it here, um, will help us when we get into Whitehall to be able to go through that mess in Whitehall, which is going to be.
Well, it will, but it shows you also how much of an uphill struggle that will be. If you can't get a flag taken down, how do you reform immigration, the NHS and education?
Well, the point is that.
And you didn't get it taken down. It came down because pride ended.
Yes, but what we can now do is see that point that we made. And go, we did it in local government. We know the sticking points to look out for. The, the thorns, the, the things that will pop up out the bushes when we get there later down the line, when we get into.
It will be very, very different because the civil servants will just turn around and just go, um, no, that's illegal. Or I'm not going to do that because that's illegal. There's when they go, this step up, it's going to be an entirely different ballgame that they're once again not prepared for.
Whitehall will see the problems emerging before they hit us. And we, we, we're sitting pretty then because we'll be seeing things that will be inevitable.
There is an irony, isn't there? I mean, there's a kind of a similarity here with the council taking on the Home Office over the Epping migrant hotel, and that's back in court this week. This idea that you're able to say to councils, do you have planning permission for this in order to get the results that you need? Because there is a perception that where Reform councillors have gone into councils, that you have found a huge amount of opposition from non-elected representatives against the elected representatives. What other examples do you have of?
And it is because the elected representatives, those reform people do not understand how the council works. We've covered this almost on a daily basis now.
Pushback from the unlisted.
Yeah. So what we said from day one is that councils should be run by members, elected members, not officers. And we saw flags were one. Uh, we've now, you know, as we speak, things that are now getting over the line, but that's took weeks and weeks to get sorted. Looking into scrapping, uh, union reps, looking in, uh, to either scrap or reduce to bare bones.
Did, did he say they want to scrap union reps? He did, didn't he? Ooh. They want to scrap union reps. Well, if that isn't an indication of what, um, of what our Reform government is going to do. Oh. Oh. Right. I tell you this now. If they try doing that, the unions are going to have a field day. Oh. The strikes across Warwickshire are going to break out left, right and centre. But yeah, um, trying to get rid of the union reps. That, oh, good luck. Good luck. Because I think, again, don't quote me on this, but I am pretty sure isn't that a legal requirement for councils? Again, I, I'm sure. I'm sure, um, that's a, that's like a legal requirement for councils. Not too sure on that. Don't take my word for it, but that might be. That'll be, um, hmm, hmm, hmm. That'll be fun. Yeah. Helping working class people, right? By getting rid of the union reps. And yeah, that's true. All those legal battles are going to have to be paid by your local taxpayer. So if I were the opposition and these legal battles start happening, I'd be straight down to my local newspaper. I'd be saying it in the town council meetings. I'd be getting it out everywhere. Your Reform councils, your Reform councillors are costing you this much because they are having silly legal battles. Trying to get rid of things, but you want, that you like, like getting rid of union representation. Again, fair point. Go one on that, Shanks, who will represent his teaching assistant mum. Very true indeed.
Net Zero or EDI, those things, um, they've been, since we got in, and we haven't yet been able to put that over the line. Do you think that's reasonable bureaucracy or is there obstructions? And they're the questions that we'll be asking. And they're the questions that we can actually go, well, we're in Whitehall, we can see how to solve these things on a national scale, not just on a local.
Because it took you some time to get Miss Fogarty's, um, contract of employment.
Yeah.
You were demanded to see what the council, uh, chief executive's powers were, how much she was being paid and the rest of it. And then what happened? You received a very redacted document back, I understand.
Well, they, they, they originally said that.
Yeah, because you just can't demand. You can't demand someone's contract of employment. I, I didn't know about this. This is the first time you heard about this.
Have it.
Oh.
That, that was my biggest, yeah, that was literally all I thought. I mean, you don't have the, uh, head of pay staff and the CEOs, uh, contract. Um, but the, the contents of it was, again, it's, it's a sensitive document, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to go into that, but there were obstructions and obstacles trying to get that, but we've got it now and that's, that's one part of the.
Wh- why, why do you want her contract? That's weird. That's weird that they're asking for that.
Battle type thing. But it, but it did show you the, the point that I make about.
I'm, I'm not too sure. That might also get very legal as well. That might also get very legal as well. Yeah, that's it. Yeah. So only him and only he can make decisions. Very true, but that's not how councils operate.
About the flags. It's not about flags or contracts or whatever. It's about the legal obstacles do happen. And they will happen in other councils and, um, in national government. It's just unfortunately, it's been, it's hit Warwickshire first.
You said you wanted to strip out diversity, equality and inclusion. I have got that right, haven't I?
Yes. I mean, you could say EDI, as George did earlier, but any order.
It's all the same. Um, you want to strip it out. How much money does that sort of thing save?
So we did a freedom of information request during the election.
Doesn't save a thing. Doesn't save a thing.
Uh, regarding incentives, jobs, uh, training, so on, for EDI. And it was in the region of nearly £400,000 a year. So if you then take that out of the MTFS for, uh, our next five years, you're looking at, um, like nearly two mil, something like that. So.
And what is Warwickshire's current deficit?
So.
So you are going to strip out all DEI. There will be legal consequences for that. There will be legal consequences for that. Good luck fighting all those lawsuits because a lot of people love to bring up the case of Birmingham Labour Council that went bankrupt. Why did that council go bankrupt? That was because they were fighting all these equal pay disputes and they could not afford the payout. Now, maybe if you've got, I don't know, DEI training and things like that going on, maybe you can avoid things like that. You, you know what would be so hilarious? If what ends up taking down a Warwickshire County Council or, or a Reform Council is if it turns out to be a lawsuit over DEI. The, the delicious irony. If that is what like pushes a Reform Council over the edge into bankruptcy would be just delicious on so many levels. It would just be so delicious.
Actually, Warwickshire isn't in debt.
Right.
We do have a statutory override, which is in a different part. It's bad economics, but all councils do it. It's not Warwickshire. It doesn't show that we're bad at economics. It's just that the actual national government allowed us to do this and they allowed all councils to do. And Warwickshire was one of the last councils to go into their statutory override. So it does show how economically healthy we are. So our statutory override for send provision is eighty seven million. But in our budget, we have the money to pay that off. So where economics works, we have no debt.
Right. You do have a deficit. You do have.
We don't have deficit, but.
What, what is the deficit?
Eighty seven million pounds.
Because four hundred thousand a year out of eighty seven million.
No, 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 but, but that's just one little element. But we've got the money. We've got already the money in the pot to pay that eighty seven million pounds up.
Right.
So.
We've got the money in the pot. We can pay it. He, he doesn't seem to understand the difference between debt and deficit, but there you go.
Next year we won't, because the deficit will increase, but that will not, that will be out of our control. It'll, next year it's predicted to go up to a hundred and forty seven million. And we're retrospectively on send provision, not one of the bigger ones.
Right.
Bigger councils. But that will, that will be way out of our control that I predict in two to three years, councils will be banging at the door saying, we're going to go bankrupt. If, if national government do not pull their weight. And this is what this education and send reform bill in September will be hoping to do. So we won't, we can maybe find a, a solution to not getting into a hundred and forty seven deficit.
Why is it send provision particularly that you think is going to be what breaks the bank rather than adult social care?
We see that, um, in the Neeton Bed.
Again, need those two things to go together, both biggest pressures on councils.
This poorer area, um, we spend our send, our, uh, children's social care and adult social care are both equal in the amounts that we have. Twenty percent each for the Neeton Bedworth, twenty percent of our budget of adult social care goes into the Neeton Bedworth, same with children's families. So the Neeton Bedworth is one of the most deprived areas we've got in Warwickshire and uses a big chunk of our adult social care and children's families bill for those issues. It's both send provision, yeah, homeschool transport, forty eight million pound a year. That needs reforming.
Forty eight million pounds.
Forty eight million pound a year on homeschool transport.
Right.
Uh, the figure that I was told by officers is that.
What do you intend to do that? If, if you're going to try and do something about that, are you going to make sure that is solved? And of course, these kids can still attend school. You can see the map of Warwickshire behind him. It's a pretty big area. Has he mentioned any policy? Are we intended to solve any of these problems? No, he's just complaining. Every single moment he's complaining about everything. You can't complain. You are the one in charge. You are the one in charge, George. It's up to you now. You've got to solve all these problems. You went in saying that you've got all these solutions to the answers, the answers to all these problems. Where are they? Doesn't seem to be here.
Two thousand five hundred children. This is the 10,000 children that use homeschool transport together. Two thousand five hundred of those children are, and do have EHCPs, educational healthcare plans. So we are statutory required to pay for that. The rest, seven thousand five hundred, don't.
Right.
And the reasons why we give homeschool transport are for they live three miles away from the school or, um, they don't have streetlights uh, on the way home, uh, or way to school, or the paths aren't properly developed. Because we're quite a rural county.
Yeah.
Uh, we are quite spread out from our schools. So you would say that we would be, most, uh, kids would be, you know, quite far away. But we have.
And this is where they start changing the rules, start changing those things to, ah, well, you see, we're saving money on this because, you know, clearly they live close enough to a school. Clearly three miles is perfectly acceptable for them to travel. Yeah. This is, this is where they're going to start, I think, doing stuff. They're going to start futzing about with stuff. And that's when stuff is going to start going wrong.
Have the look at this with a fine tooth comb. Can little Timmy maybe buy a torch?
Well, or can the council just install streetlights and paths?
Yeah.
I've always wondered this.
Yeah. His answer, poor little Timmy has to buy a torch. Poor little Timmy has to buy a torch to go to school. Um, and that will save the council millions of pounds. So what have we learned really from this interview? First of all, poor, poor little Timmy trudging to school with his little torch. And then of course, um, these kids, you know, that go to universities through this, um, communist conveyor belt, come out of universities unable to ask for ketchup. This is a bit of a bad interview. I'm surprised this hasn't got more attention. He, he's been saying some really weird stuff and I'm surprised it hasn't got more attention. But yeah, little Timmy with his, and this interviewer tries to come in and save him. Oh, but what about paying for, you know, pavements and, and lamp posts? Even if you did turn around, where are you going to get the money for it? Because then that costs money.
Well, this, you know, because if you, if you think that we're quite a rural county, Coventry, for instance, don't really have this problem of homeschool transport because they're in a confined mileage area, you know, most schools are in the area. It's easy to get to. But when you look at the map and you've got schools down here, but the next, the school up here, but you live down there, it's too far. You can't do it.
But this must be quite tricky.
Get a bus.
This must be quite tricky for you to navigate because as you revealed earlier.
Get a bus. Is there a bus? Is there a bus in local transport for those kids to get to school on time? I think this is going to be a big thing that unsticks them. This transport to school. I, I think it is. I think it is a big thing that's going to unstick them. I think it is a big thing that's going to unstick them. A big thing that could really unstick them on that one. But we are getting quite late and we're still not, now we're right, thirty three minutes, still some time to go.
Your sister has got special educational needs and do you obviously, you know, we, we're speaking to you on a day that Jeremy Hunt has come out with a policy exchange report talking about the over diagnosis of SEN in children. And is there this phenomenon now where county councils are having to pick up the bill for anxious parents, getting children diagnosed with conditions that could just be explained with words like teenage angst, for instance, so this is tricky, isn't it? Because you've seen this up close.
Yeah, do a part two, maybe, maybe, we may do a part two, but yes, I am going to end it here and maybe we'll come back to his answers on, on this part two maybe later on. But thank you very much, everyone for joining me this evening, it's been very, very fun, as always. So thank you for all the support you guys have shown to the channel, don't forget to click the like and share button on your way out. And of course, as always, we'll see you all next time. But oh boy, I don't think George Finch is going to be doing any more interviews anytime soon. I had to think they gave him this softball, they gave him this softball and, um. He seemed to have whiffed it, seems to have whiffed it, to be honest. But thank you very much, everyone for, for joining me. And of course, as always, we'll see you all next time.